Cape Charles Town Council Regular Meeting for June 18th is ordered. Hold on please.
I'm Allen here.
Good evening. And, Brad.
Wendell here.
We have a quorum. Let us stand for a moment of silence. Do you pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are voters who are going to vote for patience this evening. They're going to vote directly through public comments. Yes, thank you. So, when you... Everyone will have three minutes. When you come to your podium, please state your name and your address.
Mary Nelson. Good evening. My name is Mary Nelson. I reside at 540 Madison Avenue here in Cape Charles. I'm the owner of three businesses in Cape Charles, but I'm here tonight on behalf of Cracker Ice Cream. I'm here to object to the town's decision in regard to awarding the contract for Cape Charles By the Bay website. The concept of CapeCharlesByTheBay.com is to promote local business and attract commerce to Cape Charles. I do not want my business represented by an entity that has a history of bias and inaccurate reporting, including defamatory statements regarding local Cape Charles businesses. Based on these grounds, I have requested to have my expanded listing removed and also my free basic listing. I hope that the council will take this into consideration as we each have taken significant personal risks in order to help grow business in our community, and I only hope that the current positivity continues. Thank you.
Aaron Wallman.
My name is Jared Aaron Wallman. I'm an investor in some properties in town and several operating companies. I was a early believer in this website, really when a lady named Lynn Woken retired by the state of Virginia, and it started to exceptionally come together, and someone was asked to put in some money, and we did, and we've had some bumps along the way. We have a lot of good things going on in Cape Charles right now, a massive amount of good things. We have to put personalities to one side and principles to the other. There have been times that the current... the person who wanted to manage this site, they've shown some bias. There have been times there were some massive inaccuracies. And I come here a little bit worried because they were very complimentary of my businesses here. We are a small town. We've got good things going on. We need to relook at how this gets done, and we can. Mr. Mayor, I remember when you ran. I remember some conversations and one regarding this website in Oakland. Is it not time that we regroup? And as the incubation period is coming to an end, that we rethink how we do this? That we look at all the opportunities and we look at the lowest and best bid? One of the biggest property owners of this town yesterday made a comment to me as their ... their business for the website. "I would like to see the lowest and best bid." It's really hard to wake up on a Monday morning wondering what's going to happen if somebody writes a story without inaccuracies. We all know we've had a tough time in this town with this economy. There are papers... It's time to move forward together. Please ask your attorney how we can do this together. Please, Mr. Mayor. I asked you the other day, three days ago. I haven't heard that yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Dampster. Cynthia Dampster. I live on Allen Park Road, and I recently opened the Super S Pool shop. So, I've been approached to be on this website, and I have signed up, which I was happy to do because I think that it enhances what's going on in Cape Charles. I'm not happy with the situation at hand as far as we will be handling it because I have seen a lot of negativity on a lot of people, as I've been here three years. And if we're going to have a website to support Cape Charles, we want to be backed up by people who support Cape Charles. So, I really respectfully withdraw my listing also. Thank you.
Ella Moore.
Good evening. I'm Ella Moore, 223 Mason, owner of Ella Moore Gallery. I've been in business for 14 months now. I absolutely will not support the Cape Charles By the Bay website if the entities to be of the wave are involved in any way. There will be no support from me. Thank you.
Andrew Fulmer.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Fulmer. I live at 9 Kings Bay Drive in Cape Charles. I'm the owner of the Boardwalk, 316 Mason Avenue. I would like to voice my strong objection to the town's decision to award the contract for the management of the Cape Charles By the Bay website to the party responsible for the wave. In addition to lacking the necessary professional qualifications and experience that the town requires, they have regularly used their blog to post statements that are inaccurate, biased, and inflammatory towards local businesses, individuals, and the town itself. Therefore, I have requested that Cape Charles By the Bay, effective June 30th, remove my paid extended listing for the Boardwalk from the website and refund the money I have paid to be on it for the next 12 months. In addition, I have asked that they remove my free basic listing, my own listing from my business under the editorial review of Cape Charles. I respectfully request that the council do not be awarded this title.
David Lee.
Hello. I'm David Lee. I reside at 109 Tazewell and am the owner of Cape Charles Motor Company. I object to the awarding of the contract for management of the Cape Charles By the Bay website to the party responsible for the Cape Charles wave. The way that's a record of posting editorial content casts a negative light on both the town and its residents. I'd like to pay for expanded listing on the site for both end business, but I will not be doing so with this contract. Thank you.
Tammy Hallaway.
I'm Tammy Hallaway, and I'm representing Jim and myself. We live at 403 Tazewell Avenue, and we are owners of the Bay Haven Inn of Cape Charles. We are here to express our objections to the decision to award the contract to manage the Cape Charles By the Bay website to a company who has a significant role in the management of the Cape Charles wave. The concept of CapeCharlesByTheBay.com is to be a landing ground for potential visitors to learn and then be enticed to visit Cape Charles, with the end resulting in promoting local businesses and enhancing Cape Charles' economy, therefore adding a significant impact to the bottom line to the town's budget via business license fees, transient occupancy, and food taxes. The Cape Charles wave has a history of bias and inaccurate reporting, including defamatory statements against businesses and individuals. We have had many guests call and question their interest in visiting Cape Charles because of the way the wave has portrayed Cape Charles, and even more guests who have come interested in relocating to Cape Charles and have the longest concerns once they arrive because of the unfair and biased reporting that they have read. I do not think we have... I do not think the wave has been working... I do think the wave has been working very hard to portray positive human interest stories in the last year, and for that, we are grateful. However, the overall negative, unfound reporting still portrays an unfavorable view of our wonderful community. How can the same organization have been awarded the contract to manage our website to intense the... entice visitors to our community? Based on this decision, we have requested to have our expanded listing removed. I don't believe it's a good business practice to support an entity that places political bias over supporting the town, and I do not have confidence that the positive messages of the Cape Charles By the Bay website will continue under this new management. This is a difficult decision for us because our Google Analytics for business... for our business personally shows that it's one of the top three places that our bookings come from. So, it says a lot about the success of that website.
Excuse me a minute, please. I need to come up to the side. Please, everyone, turn your cell phones into silent. I don't want to hear how the cell phone, please. Thank you. Can you back up just a little?
I can, yes.
I'll give a couple lectures.
Sorry. The point that I was making that one is one that may... a lot of people may not understand or know about, but a way to measure how your website is successful is by Google Analytics. And you can go on there and see what hits from different places bring traffic directly to your website. And I was actually surprised recently when I did a year-long study to see that how high Cape Charles By the Bay ranking drug direct traffic to our website. Direct ta... traffic to our website equals bookings. You know, working to get them there is half the battle.
Three seconds.
Yes. We are some of the Cape Charles leadership leaders, and I think you all know that, and are very happy with the life decision we made to start our business in town. I hope the council will take this into consideration as we each have taken significant personal risks in order to help grow our business and community.
Thank you.
John Dampster.
Hello. Hi, I'm John Dampster, and here to represent the... my business is Shanty, 33 Marina Road in Cape Charles. Also, here to object to the town's decision to award the contract for CapeCharlesByTheBay.com to the group responsible for the wave. As others have stated, I believe the concept of the website is to promote local business and to be a bridge for all of us to have an opportunity to put ourselves out there, and I don't believe it has any business being involved with a company that has a history of bias and inaccurate reporting with defamatory statements regarding local Cape Charles businesses. I also have requested that my listing, my expanded listing be removed, and I certainly have also requested that my free listing be removed as I don't believe in doing business with people who don't support their clients. Also, on top of that, I've read the contract that was awarded, and you know, I see that there is a clause in there for a termination without cause. You know, I believe that the council should hear the people that are here now and take the time to make a motion and just terminate this thing now so that we can move forward in a positive light. We've all taken significant risks in this town financially, personally, you know, and that goes for each and every one of us, and this website truly is for the people that are in this room to help this town grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooke Stedlen.
My name is Brooke Stedlen. I operate Cape Charles House Bed and Breakfast, and I want to concur with everything that's been said here so far tonight. I also want to say that we will withdraw our expanded listing and our free listing on the Cape Charles By the Bay. I would also like to make one other point of interest. A short time ago, the town raised the occupancy tax 0.7% in a meeting that we all discussed, and most of the people were here. That 0.7% was supposed to go to support this website. Now, if you think back and go there and take the total amount of top tax that we get, not just transient occupancy tax, but also wheels tax, everything else, you should support this. As far as I'm concerned, you should support it totally. Or you ought to take the money that we raised, that 0.7%, and delegate it to the Cape Charles By the Bay, which so many of you think ought to run this anyway. I almost feel like awarding this contract to your chosen vendor is almost like a debt of because the business association wouldn't take this. So, I don't know how many people were in on the decision to do this, but I can tell you it was mentioned me in conversation three times by Mr. Panik, and then you get him to take over the website. I feel there's more to this than meets the eye, and I do think you ought to designate that money to go to support our website, either by the town or either by the business association who needs people with money. That's what it's supposed to be for, according to discussion when we all agree to bill up 0.7% of the occupancy tax. If you're not going to support it, then I think you ought to lower the occupancy tax a little. Thank you.
Carol Owens.
Carol Owens. We have Cape Charles House Bed and Cape Charles House Bed and Breakfast on the first. I just would like to register my concerns for the lack of consideration for this very, very important decision. As Tammy has said, this is reflective of who we are as a town and what we do, and we need to be very professional, and we need people who know and understand what this business is. We talk to people who are with masters, and we find out that they... their job is very responsible, and it requires people who have been in the business for many years. Social media is by far the most important means of getting our word out, and I don't believe we have someone who's responsible for making that professional connection for our town. So, that's what I have to say, and I hope you really think about this and consider an alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the last person to sign. If anyone who came in late wants to sign up for the call.
Hi, guys. I'm Shane Hayward. I have Easton Shore Custom Carts and Cape Charles Water Sports, 713 Randolph Avenue and 33 Marina Drive. I'm on board with everything these guys said. Take me off the list, eliminate my expanded listing, and take me off the free listing too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Malcolm Hayward, 325 Truitt Court. I moved today. I hadn't thought about that. Still 233 Monroe. As a business owner and as a citizen, I think the most important thing in selecting a vendor to build a website is their experience, their knowledge, and their marketing ability. Like you know, I've been in charge of several websites, told where we're ready to best move on. A website is a marketing tool. It's not... it's not there for any other reason, not this particular website. The town website is there for different reasons. The town website is there to give information about the town. It's not meant to be a marketing tool. This is meant to be a marketing tool. So, I hope whoever did the diligence looked at it from the perspective of whoever's going to develop it better had a lot of marketing savvy, better understood all the technicalities of what goes into the website today. It's not just a WWW, it's the Facebook, it's the Twitter, and it's all the other stuff. So, I would ask you as council to investigate the validity of the backgrounds of the awarded people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Monfold, 704 Press Return. I am not in Cape Charles as a business, but I supply just about 90% of businesses their products for whatever resale, retail, information, marketing. I am totally opposed to this, and I'm coming from also the planning commission, also on the board of directors for the business association. The amount of stuff that those two entities have done... mine is... forget my business. Those two entities have done a smut of growth in the potential of where this town is trying to go and what we're trying to achieve. And the decision to basically give this entity or person that responsibility for the business owners that live in this town makes no sense to me, regardless if they're a little bit or not. They're having to have another criteria of the... of their just ability to do it with... with everybody knows what they've written about. If you do a search just on Cape Charles itself, top ten listings would pop up or top ten negative ads or articles about Cape Charles. So, if you just do a search for it, you'll see that they pop up on top of the first 10 spots, and that's the first page. Not many people go beyond the first page, so that puts us right there, and why the hell am I going to go to the... excuse my French, but why would I go to that? So, I'm really on the board with everybody else. I mean, I'm a secondary business that supplies everybody their stuff, not in Cape Charles, but speaking that as a private citizen, so it's by two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I have three comments to leave in here today.
All right. Thank you.
The first one is from Edward Franklin, 124 Peach Street. Says, "To the town council of Cape Charles, I would like to add my voice to those of the other townsfolk and town merchants who have expressed his name as selection of the manager for the CapeCharlesByTheBay.com website. I was part of the original committee that selected Steve Van Luys' company, Zaniva, to create the site and also assisted in concept and content for the site. Hotel Cape Charles has had an expanded listing on the site since it was launched and is available for such group next year already. It is our wish that the manager selected for this website have the following qualities and qualifications: On his demonstrated facility and fluency with all major social media platforms, year-round resident of Cape Charles, dossier of past work in promotion of tourism sites, venues, and/or destinations, demonstrated positive attitude toward local businesses, cooperative spirit, true fall. It appears to us that the candidate selected to manage the website does not reside in Cape Charles, does not reside year-round on the Easton Shore, does not have a solid background in tourism, marketing, or development of websites aimed at such, and has demonstrated an antagonistic set of behaviors toward many individuals and businesses, business entities via highly contentious, contentious blog that reports to be listed. In short, it would be difficult to locate a less desirable candidate for this sort of a work. A desirable candidate would be present in town twelve months of the year and able to feed content to social media year-round, using photographs taken at many sorts of events occasions, will be able to work cooperatively and cheerfully with business owners and individuals in town, not just with a very small subset of citizens, and will have demonstrated ability to use social media of all types. If suitable replacement candidate cannot be located, we request to be removed from the website altogether and to have our $160,000 refund in full to us. Any manager or editor of content on this website needs to have the trust and faith of the community and the business community at the onset. We will be willing to work with such a person and will be willing to remain a part of the website if such a person is retained for this work. Yours very sincerely, Ed. The next one is from George Southern of Cape Charles Wave. Dear Cape Charles Town Council, we were very pleased to be notified that our family company, Cape Charles Wave LLC, was awarded the contract for Cape Charles By the Bay website maintenance and support in social media marketing. Our contract was signed with the town on June 10th, and we have already begun selling advertising. Our goal is to double the number of ads currently on the website. I would like to take this opportunity to warn you that Cape Charles Wave LLC should not be confused with online newspaper we publish under the name Cape Charles Wave. This is important to understand because the Wave newspaper will have no connection to the Cape Charles By the Bay tourism website. The two websites will be wholly separate endeavors outlined by both under the management of Cape Charles Wave LLC. The situation is similar to this past year when Cape Charles By the Bay was serviced by Clash of Key Marketing owned by the holders who also own the Big Street Inn. That did not mean that the Big Street Inn was in charge of Cape Charles By the Bay. In the same way, our online Wave newspaper will not be running Cape Charles By the Bay. In waiting to bid for web services, we know that our family company's editor and publisher are professionally trained journalists. The webmaster is a PhD candidate in computer engineering with work experience both at Apple headquarters and Cupertino-Tomacornia and Samsung's computer headquarters in San Jose. Graphics expertise is provided by the former graphics artist for Walt Disney World. We want to make it clear that our family operation is well-qualified to assume this contract. During its three years of operation, Cape Charles Wave has publicized some 400 events in and near the town of Cape Charles. We are also experienced in social media, using Facebook to promote stories and readership. We are excited about the opportunity to invigorate the Cape Charles By the Bay website by greatly increasing the advertising contained on it. As owners of vacation rental property in Cape Charles, we are particularly desirous of seeing the town attractive visitors and appreciate this opportunity to be part of that effort. Sincerely, George and George Southern. Last email is from Man Bennett at 100 Peach Avenue. Says, "I think designing for Cape Charles in the corner of Route 18 Stone Road does not constitute a focus as a vacation destination. It could serve a more useful purpose to the business community if it stayed at something like shops, safe places." Thank you, Man Bennett.
How many... how many comments are there that we get on the website that you have to keep track and keep track of?
13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 15, 16.
Are there any more comments to be made? The time for public comment is closed. It's time to go on to the rest of the agenda. Would you like a motion to approve the agenda format? All in favor? Any opposed? Agenda format is approved. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Is that second? Before I call for the motion, is there any discussion there? I believe there's one change in the town that needs to be made. The question may be, are there not? Any discussion? No. Lumi, can you point and check out this?
It's on page four of the May 21 regular meeting under Old Business A, TSA Rejoice Bar update. Under Rownet 1, the price is like eight, nine miles down since further negotiations would be regarding surcharge. The town proposed a 0.3 cent surcharge of the base price per gallon, and in grand, it should be 1.2 cents.
Just to type up. So, with the... with the minutes amended, do you need a second motion on this? No. Can I have the motion to approve the minutes amended? Yes, second motion. All in favor? All in. Minutes are approved. Treasurers in court.
Page one, total cash on hand at the end of May was $1,136,481. It's a decrease of $15,546 over usual. $250,000 was transferred from the operating account to a new interest-bearing money market account for upcoming capital project cash payment. Total restricted reserve cash was $1,164,336. Total cash to all accounts as of the end of May was $2,981,818. We have the next debt service payment due in July. That's for $121,964. Any questions? Page two, it's current... current year budget performance. General fund, year-to-date revenue of $2.23 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.76 million, for a net balance of $465,000. Public utilities fund has year-to-date revenue of $1.52 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.38 million, for a net balance of $138,000. The harbor fund shows year-to-date revenue of $723,700 and year-to-date expenses of $782,000 for a net balance of -58,600. If you look last year, we were at -163,500. So, we're doing quite a bit better this year, and there's still a decimal yet to go. Sanitation fund, year-to-date revenue of $162,000, year-to-date expenses of $141,000 for a net balance of $20,500. for a net balance of 20.5,000. Page three, capital projects. Finance department dispersed 22,704 dollars for capital expenditures in May, 8,848 for the library H. E. A. C., and that project is complete, which would change that to 100%. 2,264 dollars for the Pine Street waste management area, 8,864 for the Mason Street railroad parking area, 342 dollars for the wells, 733 for the automatic flush system, and 1,683 for the pump station upgrades. To date, we're at 50.9% of the capital budget excluding the trail project, chloramine system, and an pole arena likely to be pushed into fiscal year 2016. Any questions? Tax collections statistics are pretty close to last month's report. We collected 99% of the budget of real estate tax revenue, personal property license, machinery and tools taxes, and with associated adjustments, we collected 89% of the budget. For prior year, all property taxes, interest, and penalty collections were at 105% of budget. Page five, last page. This comparison of fiscal year-to-date tax revenue over years 2013, 14, and 15. Over, over last year, the meals tax has a 6.7% increase, transient occupancy tax a 17% increase, and we did increase the rate by .7 in January. Business licenses increased by 3.8%, off-car decals are up by 30%, personal property tax collections are up by 10.5%, and admissions, I believe, is the only decrease, and that was 7%. After thorough audit in May, it was discovered that there are quite a few businesses who haven't yet filed their business license for 2015, and there are four that haven't paid for several years. I contacted everyone personally. I did find out that we have the ability to pursue warrants for those who have applied, but first I'll contact them individually to see if they have necessary for the warranty more than one year in years. So we are working, one of them already paid today, we've got two promises for next week, and one's a fee. Failure to obtain a business license is a classified misdemeanor. Any questions?
Any questions? Any motion to approve the urgent report? Somebody's supposed to... Your pardon? Motion on second. Second. Do I say it the same time? Yeah, you hear it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Report's approved, planning commission.
Good evening, I just have a couple things to add to my report. Under planning commission number five, the update on the comprehensive plan meeting with O.A.M. on the planning list for commission will begin on Monday, the 13th of July at 6:00. And if anyone's interested, and I'm sure everyone is, the drawings for reverse angle parking proposed for Bay Avenue were delivered this morning, so if anyone wants to come and take a look, comment, throughout my office, they'll be made available digitally. I'll go and find out the planning commission on the meeting on the 7th of July, so now as long as it's a sheet of paper right now, now's the time to come take a look, comment, ask questions, make a voice note, log out.
Thank you. So, and when is the, for the public information, can you tell us when that reverse angle parking is supposed to be put in place?
No time this summer. We're not, not at all this summer, we're not ready to go till apartment process here.
Sometime in fall?
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely sometime in fall.
Sure.
All right, any questions? This will be great. Thank you. Public enforcement.
I'd love to add, unless you have to have any questions.
Questions? Well, it's all looking very good, very positive, thank you. Town Harbor. Any questions? Any feeling for how these bullshit went?
I think it went all right, it's hot. I don't think it went all right.
Thank you very much. Next, we have... Harbor.
The only thing I really want to add is that we've started our summer program, and we've already had 139 kids sign up to read, and I think this summer is reading to the rhythm. Any questions?
And the upstairs hall finished, the television's off.
We haven't done that yet, but the order is in, it will be done soon. Okay, any other questions?
Got any plans for how you're going to replace the computers? Have you thought about that yet?
We are going to, we have a quote from Chesapeake Bay, and they are going to replace the RAM, add extra RAM to some of them, and then we're going to purchase, we have $24,000 in our budget, or is it 2400, yeah, in our budget to buy new computers, so we'll be purchasing some new computers as well as updating some of the ones we have. Right now, to take care of the problem, we have limited to 30 minutes. Generally, because we have 21 computers, that's total, staff included, we never have a wait, very rarely do we have a wait, and now we put it at 30 minutes if there is a wait, so that's how we're dealing with the problems. Quite a few of our computers being down. And they're not used as much as they were, say, five years ago, because we have a lot of people with laptops and handheld devices, we do have wireless, so that helps also.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public utilities. I don't see the caller here. Can you take us through a brief review of this here, anything that you're reading that needs to be cleared out here? Oh, utilities. I have to go back, I got my, I apologize, I got my...
I have my backup, I apologize, the front back up.
Yeah, the front back up. We'll come back to you, you guys will hear all of it. As far as...
As far as in terms of public utilities, I would raise that he's submitted, maybe a folder, projects in progress, working with GHD, preparing for upgrades to Plum Street, Pine Street pump stations, pipeline from pet wells, or 90% engineering submitted to BTH, working with VDOT engineers on the new road from 184 to Mason Drive, which involves some renovations and town utilities. The staff has compiled and updated SOP for water plant standard operating procedures, excuse me. The graphic has been completed for the filter backwash. Upcoming projects, we have installed water fountains in Central Park, which they actually have laid out and are ready for installation now, the library and at the beach rest of bathrooms, also be installing the auto flush on Creekside Land.
Any question?
Yeah, so, I'm talking to the, 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 yeah, I have a, a cost.
I'm not, and you wear the cost associated with the water fountains?
Yeah, we're, we're on a day, but it's on, it's on, it's on.
Yeah, previously, I think they quoted within 120,000 dollar range. That's, I'm typically more accustomed to exterior water fountains than interior, but I think they're typically about the same price.
All right, no other questions or comments? All right, now we will take the police department.
I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, we did a little bit last month, we all came from.
So any questions for the chief of it?
Ten felony arrests are record.
Much more on the back.
Since you've been on the floor?
All right. No other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Creation department.
I just wanted to add that I'm working for July, I'm preparing for the night, and we have made a decision that we are going to shut down the street here at 8:00 this year, 8:00 P.M. this year, for the safety of everybody in town. We have a huge amount of people in the vendors trying to get out, just causing a lot of problems for everybody, so just, everyone aware?
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? We'll be calling it a fourth. Do you have any assistance come on soon, I see?
Yes, we'll start Tuesday, thank you.
When's, when's the first day it'll be on the beach?
Tuesday, 8:00 A.M.
Go down there.
8:00 A.M. Anybody who's, wants a workout can head down to the beach, and then we'll be, I believe, 10:02 as well, doing activities, about 8:00, 8:30 is fitness.
I'm assuming he has something for those of us who are completely unfit, right?
So...
It's okay.
I'm all in that category, so, so, definitely.
Thank you. All right, next, we're going to Old Business. This is the fiscal year 2015, 2016, proposed budget appropriation.
Council's reviewed budgets for all four funds, and we've had a public hearing, so now at this time, according to Section 15.2-2503 in Dakota, Virginia, we've met that criteria, and the attached resolution shows all that estimated spending expenditures we've gone over, that have been proposed, so we'd like to recommend adoption of Resolution 2015-0618, approving the budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and making appropriations for the fiscal year by roll call.
Second. I move for adoption of resolution. Sorry. No, sorry?
Can you answer Mr. Summers?
Oh, I will, I have them on my desk, and I'll get to them later in the week, but I haven't answered them all yet.
The copy has one minute, follow those actions.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 2015-0618, approving the budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and making appropriations for the fiscal year as noticed, as noticed, as we're going reading of the resolution, we will hold all of this.
You have a yes?
Brian, yes.
Ben, yes.
Ben, yes.
Brian, yes.
Wendell, yes.
Motion is carried, thank you very much. Next item on business is Cape Charles Community Trail Phase Two.
The, I briefly before that the bids for Phase Two came in over the budget, and we've been working with VDOT and our consultants, Land Studio, on some options for reducing the scope of the construction project. We are, VDOT has confirmed that we're going to have to re-bid the project. We're in the process now of writing and requesting written authorization to do that. We'll be taking out of this phase the piece on Washington Avenue from Peach to Fix Street that will go into another phase, and we will revise the bid package to have a base bid and that as an alternate, bid alternate, and we'll probably construct a few additional bid alternates to remove some amenities so we can get the base bid and budget and pick up those bid alternates as money is available. The, our contract with Land Studio that is, is actually having money right now, and they have provided us a proposed change order based on the estimated amount of the trail construction contract award. VDOT's guidelines are 12% of the contract construction amount for construction engineering and administration. That equates, we're hoping to bring it in at 1.35 million, so the change order would be 162,000 dollars for the construction engineering administration. We do need to get this under contract for them to revise the bid package and manage the rebid. The, this is a not-too-exceed amount, it's billed as work is accomplished. We hope it's not going to be that amount, because we're going to do a couple of things and have a couple of administrative items, manage the business making, compliance, processing house, as well as the management of business activity, processing house. So to move ahead, we're recommending that council authorize the town manager to execute the contract change order in the amount of 162,000 dollars for construction administration.
I would like a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the Land Studio O.P.C. contract change order in the amount of 162,000 dollars for construction administration. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this, question?
This is construction administration, the contract hasn't been opened yet, so isn't it really a A.D. services or engineering services change?
It could be, we could, we could, we could go ahead and award a smaller amount, 480 to do the rebid, but then we're going to have to come back again as soon as it's awarded and pick this up, so we thought we could put it all in one change order. The, as I said, there's no, there's no obligation to pay until the work is done, so we'd like to get the change order approved.
When do you anticipate the package to be reviewed? When do you anticipate the package to be reviewed?
Well, we have to, we'll send the official letter, VDOT, we just got their guidance today, so we'll send the official letter requesting it by Monday. I suspect it'll only take a week or two for them to approve it, and then the bids, Land Studio's actually working on revising the bid package now. The bids will have, the IFD will have to be out for the minimum of 21 days, so we're probably looking at two to three months for the work.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? All right. Motion is kept. Oh, opposed? Quick word?
I'm not, I'm quick.
Okay, question is kept. Thank you. Next item, the Harbor Breakwater Project.
Harbor Breakwater. This is similar to the last item, as you know, in the budget that you just approved is the third Harbor offshore breakwater for 860,000 dollars. That estimate includes both construction and construction engineering. The, we have gotten a proposed change order to the Lightning McDonald slash E.C.A.'s joint venture contract, which had been awarded several years ago to do the harbor design, redevelopment design, and the construction of the two breakwaters and the floating docks and bays. The change order is 39,500, and that will include a hydrographic survey at the bottom to see if there are any changes that occurred since the two breakwaters were put out there, all of the inspections and construction of the bid package and all of that. There's a little complication on this one. The original contract was with a joint venture, the principal of these codes, hydrographic has died, and so it's no longer a joint venture, so we are recommending assignment of the contract to Lightning McDonald, who was the major entity in the joint venture. the major entity in the joint venture. So the recommendation is to authorize the town manager to execute both the contract assignment from L M slash E C H joint venture to Lightning McDonald, and the contract change order in the amount of $39,500 for the necessary construction engineering.
A move. Is there any discussion? Comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item of business is the Code 42 dash 3 adoptions law. Chief Department, I can spread to you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is quite familiar with this, comes before you every year, prior to July 1, this sort of makes any changes to the town code that may be affected by the accident general summary over the last session, what this does is it updates the town code to make it consistent with the state code, and the staff have recommended adoption of such, and just note also that from now till effect until July 1, 2015.
I make the motion to adopt the proposed artist 201-50618, to adopt the mental control of the 462, 516, and chapter 11, article 9, paragraph 16.2 dash 278, sequence and title, 18.2, chapter 7, article 2, paragraph 18.2 dash 266, and sequence, if any, for incorporation into the Charles, King Charles Town Code, chapter 42, motor vehicles and traffic, as noticed, and for thorough reading of the ordinance. All in favor? All, all, all. Roll call, I beg your pardon?
You have, yes.
You have, yes.
Ben, yes.
Ben, yes.
Brian, yes.
Wendell, yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. And the next point is a parking ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, this ordinance before you tonight is a result of the reverse angle parking that took place on Mason Avenue, and Ms. Larry brought us up to speed on the status of Bay Avenue earlier. This ordinance specifically addresses within the town code what constitutes a violation of the parking ordinance in relation to reverse angle or back angle parking, or whatever you want to wish to call it. The staff does request adoption of the codes of ordinance 2015-0618A to adopt town code. Section 42 dash 61, parking on town streets, by roll call vote.
You have a motion? Second. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, in the first paragraph, this is the plan, mission, research, and parking, and I discovered that full head angle parking was not permitted. Is that, is that correspondence documented as to who said that it wasn't permitted? It's been questioned a lot, I'm not sure if it was, you know, the work, if it was done over the telephone, but, I mean, do we have the name of the person who said that you didn't pull in and head back in? Is that an official V dot person?
I don't know that we have any confirmation of someone telling me that you cannot do that, I think the problem is the, the codes of ordinances tell you what you can do, they don't tell you what you can't do, so I don't know if there's any specific regulation out there, I know that as part of the land use permit process that's coming through with the Virginia Department of Transportation, you know, I guess the reverse angle parking was pretty much the only annual parking option, is my understanding, that would be considered.
And my second question, is there any provision on the length of the, let's say, these large pickup trucks back in, and part of it protrude out into the lane, which forces the person over to go on to the next lane, is that addressed anywhere, that there's a limit to the length of a vehicle that can be protruding out into the street?
Yeah, I do not know that there is a, a limit to, to the length of the vehicle that's authorized to park in reverse angle land.
No, my point is that if somebody is to pull in at the fastest, and pull all the way in, and they get a ticket, somebody backs in and has the front of their vehicle to where it inhibits traffic from staying in the lane, that, that's nothing.
There is a different code section in Virginia that addresses structural traffic by any kind of, they park in any direction, but their parking in the travel lane, in the large force law, can in fact, allow some, of course, structural traffic.
And then, I guess, is, we have the overflow parking, let's see, never expedited, but I'm sure that there's plans to purchase some additional parking, I'm not afraid, from the railroad or expand on that, but it's, it's a very awkward situation.
Well, yeah, right now we want to take care of this one, so if there's no further discussion or question, we roll call vote on this, and we just read this, move for adoption of ordinance number 2015-0618A to adopt town code, paragraph 42, 61, parking on town streets, as noticed, and for thorough reading of the ordinance, roll call vote, please.
You have, yes.
And...
Ben, yes.
Brian, yes.
Wendell, no.
Motion is carried. And that finishes for now, except for comments by council on that. Does anybody in council have any comments? Chris? Tom?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone in the audience, who took the time to come and share their upgrades at other towns, and I will be my best to stay there.
Thank you. Hello? I'm here.
I'm in there.
Thank you very much.
Double click.
You can't do that. One, one quick announcement, I have canceled Lion Bear's office hours for this coming Tuesday, and, you know, they can get me, I'm around the house all the time, and I have a mayor's phone, and I have a mayor's meeting, so, I'm back to that way. And I also thank the county for their comments, appreciate it, and the county will be looking into this, so, quick point, I'll take a note, roll, roll, second. Second.